Good afternoon. We are calling to order our April 13th Hamilton County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. We start our meetings with prayer and then we stand for the pledge of allegiance and we just want to, it's just a rough time in the world right now. So much that we can pray for, so many people hurt, so many people lost. Let's play for the people and everyone in our world. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
We have a couple presentations, but one special one. I'd like to call up, if the board will allow me, to call up Sheriff McGuffey. Our board has worked in collaboration with Sheriff McGuffey when there's something as it relates to law enforcement or losing someone in law enforcement, we turn to her with the proper recognition, the proper accommodation. And so we have a memorial proclamation that we're presenting today, but I'd like for Sheriff McGuffey, if she would say a word and set the tone, and then we'll read the proclamation.
Absolutely. Thank you, President Reese, and thank you.
Oh, we need you at the microphone, Sheriff, I'm sorry. We're on YouTube.
Absolutely. Thank you, President Reese, and thank you, county commissioners, and also everyone in attendance. We're here today, of course, to remember and lend our condolences to the family, friends, and department of Timothy Unwin, who was an officer for the Springfield Township Police Department. And he was responding to an Officer Needs Assistance call and unfortunately was involved in an accident and he was killed. He also, unfortunately, there was a civilian man, a Mr. Dunson, who we also extend our condolences to, who was involved as a fatality. We would like to, today, with your blessing, call up the Springfield Township Chief, Chief Bly, and his captain to accept your condolences.
Thank you. We have a proclamation, a memorial proclamation we'd like to read and then have you come forward and accept it, and if you'd like to say a word as well. We are presenting a memorial proclamation honoring Officer Tim Unwin for his service to Hamilton County. All three of us was at the viewing and, as well. Whereas Springfield Township Police Officer Timothy J. Unwin was born on August 23rd, 1991, to loving parents Glenn and Don Unwin, and grew up in Harrison Township with his brother Greg and his sister Kim.
And whereas Officer Unwin graduated from William Henry Harrison High School in 2009 and went on to earn a degree at Cincinnati State Community College in 2013.
And whereas Officer Unwin was hired by the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office as a corrections officer in December 2014, where he served the public at the Hamilton County Justice Center. He went on to attend the Great Oaks Police Academy, graduating in 2016.
Would you read the next "whereas"?
Okay. Whereas in August of 2019, Officer Unwin continued to serve the public as a patrol officer with the City of Hamilton Police Department before being hired by the Springfield Township Police Department as a patrol officer on May 24th, 2021.
And whereas Officer Unwin was known for enjoying workouts and staying physically fit. He loved working on cars, especially his Subaru. He had an infectious smile and was liked by everyone that worked with him. He was willing to lend a helping hand to anyone in need.
Whereas Officer Unwin was killed in the line of duty on March 31st, 2023, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners honors and celebrates the life of Officer Timothy J. Unwin, who served Hamilton County with distinction and bravery. Gone but not forgotten, may he rest in peace. And it's signed by all three of us. Would you like to say a word and we'll then come around and present it to you?
Thank you, President Reese, and the commissioners. This is a really trying time, but one thing that's given us a lot of strength is the overwhelming support that county leaders have given us throughout this. It's given us the confidence to get through this. The Unwin family really appreciates it. The Dunson family really appreciates it. In this tragedy, we were able to come together as three families, the Springfield Township Community and Police Department, the Unwin family and the Dunson family to get through this. And it's special times like this that I think has given us the strength to do it. Two weeks ago, we lost two lives, and they both served this community in different ways but equally important. And I thank you guys for giving us the time to honor both of those gentlemen for their service that they provided this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and I want to acknowledge our board. We will also be presenting a memorial proclamation to the Dunson family in honor of Mr. Dunson as well.
Madam President.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, thank you for being here. Thank you all for being here for Springfield Township. What is so striking, I think, about this loss and what it means to the community is that you have come together with the Dunson family, with the community of Springfield Township, and really all of Hamilton County. And we mourn with you, we celebrate the life with you, and really grateful that you're
This week is our National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and it's April 9th through the 15th.
here in person to accept this memorial resolution, because your loss is really our loss and the loss for the entire county.
We've got a couple proclamations to read.
So, thanks again for being here.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to also comment, give my condolences, of course. As was said earlier, we went to the visitation, and I was reading in the proclamation how
Proclamation and recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, 2023,
he liked working on the Subaru, but he also had a very nice Mustang that was on the car
April 9th through April 15th, 2023.
when we went there. And I just say, it was a young life, gone too soon for us, but God knew that it was
Whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact of
his time, so we pray for the family.
our citizens, that our citizens have with emergency service and are our first responders.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Telecommunicators are the rarely seen but always heard professionals that provide the calm voice that helps to mitigate critical situations in our community.
And whereas public safety telecommunications of the Hamilton County Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. In 2022, employees processed 646,483 telephone calls. Wow. 249,512 law enforcement incidents, and 76,616 EMS incidents, and 14,642 fire incidents.
Go ahead, do the next one.
Whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. These professionals have worked countless hours beyond normal expectations, and we thank you, with the common goal of making sure our 911 calls are answered professionally and in the most expeditious manner possible. They continue to play a vital role in working through the day-to-day traffic as we recover from a worldwide pandemic.
And whereas this year, we recognize Communications Officer Donald Hensley. CEO Hensley is a veteran of nearly 20 years. He was selected as the Hamilton County Police Association's Communications Officer of the Year for his years of service to Hamilton County's law enforcement.
Whereas this year, we also recognize Communications Officer Jennifer Van Horn, who was nominated by her peers and selected to be the Hamilton County Communications Center Dispatcher of the Year for 2022. Van Horn is a 10-year veteran of the organization. She is a training officer and strong advocate for her peers and the 911 telecommunications industry. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, that the minutes and the record of this communication recognize National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 9th through April 15th, 2023, in honor of the dedicated employees of the Hamilton County Communications and all telecommunicators throughout Hamilton County. That's it.
Madam President, thank you for the opportunity to recognize our employees. And if you don't mind, I'd like to call, I've got a couple of folks with us, including our Dispatcher of the Year, Jennifer Van Horn. And if I could just introduce, come on up in front. Ashley Wayne Scott is a communications supervisor. I have Holly Lampton, who is an operations manager, and Jen Van Horn is one of our communications officer and our communications officer of the year. These folks represent the future of the organization in several aspects, and one of the aspects I'd like to point out is unique, that all three of them are deeply involved within the training program. As you've known, and I've kept you up to date on the staffing challenges that we've had at the organization, these folks right here are the ones that are prepping the future and are taking the new folks and bringing them into the Hamilton County family and letting them know exactly how we operate and how our operation functions. Not only do they do the normal day-to-day training, they've had to develop creative ways of training people in a much more efficient manner and in a manner that we can handle larger numbers so that we could recoup that deficit of our staffing we have. So Holly is responsible for the overarching training program, and Ashley sees the day-to-day operations, and she's our training coordinator. And if, not to put you on the spot, but Ashley really is the one that has been honing in this training concept and getting us to a training academy, something we've never done before. You were kind enough to allow us to have a backup center that we've never had before, and now we use that backup center for a combination of training and also to be on an absolute standby for our backup needs. But these are the folks that are forging the future. Jen, who we affectionately call JVH, is an absolute bright star in our organization and has been coming up through the ranks and has consistently demonstrated what it means to be one of the best of the best within the organization. And I could not be any more proud of all three of these ladies and the work that they do on a day-to-day basis for the residents. As you heard, the numbers that we handle are incredible. Nationwide, there's a 911 call every second of the day, and these folks are working incredible amount of hours. Take a brief moment also regarding, Jen's husband is in the audience, and we actually owe all of the families of our workers a debt of gratitude in that they are working an inordinate amount of hours far beyond what our normal expectations are, but they do it all in the air of making sure that our 911 traffic is answered as expeditiously as possible. So, a shout out to all of the families of our workers. We greatly appreciate the sacrifice that they make when they come into a public safety family. So, these are your first responders, and again, I could not be any more proud of them, and I appreciate the opportunity to recognize them. Thank you.
Now, I know you do a lot of talking, but I wanted to know if you wanted to say anything, either of you or?
I just want to thank you for inviting us here today. I just want to thank my coworkers also at the Communication Center, because it's not a one-person show. It's a big team effort, and we like to treat all of our callers like one of our own, and if you do it that way, you'll never go wrong. So, thank you.
Thank you. You all don't want to say anything? I wanted to just add and open up for my colleagues where we present you these proclamations. We just cannot thank you enough for the job that you do and the stories that you hear, the lives that you save. And I think you said your husband was here, want to thank the families, because I know you go home with it. And just really want to thank you. Director, I just want to publicly thank you. When I first got elected, you gave me a tour and everything, and I usually, I pick up quick on people. And the fact, when you say it, if I have to, I'll roll up my sleeves. I mean, you didn't say it in a negative way, and I just, I was telling Mr. Ludo two weeks ago, talking about you and your commitment, because to me, it doesn't seem like it's a job for you. It's a calling and what you really, really want to do, and it seems like that's the same with the staff, that this is not just a job. You can go work anywhere, but you chose this. You chose to help people, and I just, I just really can't thank you all enough. Vice President Drehouse?
Yes, thank you. I want to echo those sentiments and say thank you for being here, ladies. It's good to see you, and Andy, of course. You know, when you talk about, and we know it's been strained because of some of the challenge with trying to recruit people into the profession, glad you're training them up so they stay and hang out with us for a little while. But when you talk about overtime, you know, it's one thing for somebody like me to work overtime, and, you know, I'm working, but I'm not doing what you're doing overtime. And so overtime for 911 Communication Center employees is a very different thing, because it's so stressful, and you are dealing with people constantly on their worst day. And so for you all to work overtime, I think is really something that we need to applaud, recognize, and thank you for. So, thank you for hanging in there with us. We do have a, I want to note, a new Communication Center coming on. You know, this board, because you've taken us all through, said, how can we show the folks at the Communication Center that we really do appreciate the work and the effort and the time and the passion that you have for the work? And one of them was providing for a better environment for you to train in and for you to work in, and so that will be coming online eventually. But it is really because of Andy's efforts and all of your efforts that you've made us so aware of the importance of the work that you're doing. So, thanks so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You certainly deserve that new building that's coming. And the reason why I emphasize those numbers so much for me is that, I don't know if you knew those, that those numbers were so high, eventually you'll hear, but 646,000 telephone calls? So, when I read it, for me, it was lives. Look at all those lives that you saved that you don't even know about, you know? And so I just thank you for all the lives that you've saved. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to come around. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's Mr. Ludo.
I wasn't going to do this. I was actually going to wait later till my comments, but might be more appropriate now if Kristi, or do we have? So, first and foremost, this morning, at the onboarding that we do for the county, we brought through six new recruits for 911, so additional help on its way to put into the hands of these guys to train up. But as it relates to that staffing issue in terms of attracting new talent into 911, we all know there's a public safety recruitment challenge across the board, and we've put together, as we try to enhance our recruitment, we put together some additional videos to try to advertise, to a greater extent, the, what type of a shop it is that we have at 911. The best way, I think, we can advertise is to show the people that are actually working there, because of the excitement that you can tell that comes through when these guys talk. So, I wanted to see, Kristi, are we able to play that now? So, if the board would indulge me, I'd just like to show a quick video that we're going to start using for some of our recruitment efforts.
National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week is a week that we set aside every April to recognize the efforts of the faceless, never-seen but always-heard voices of the 911 system and of our dispatch system.
It's such a critical element for our society, and it's a new call every time I get to be the person that they need. When they need somebody to help them, I get to be that person, and it makes you feel pretty good when you can accomplish those things for people.
I love my team so much. I mean, we work together so much, and it's like a little family here. I mean, you see each other on holidays and weekends and nights and days and all the time, so you get really close with your team.
I would like for more people to know that we do like the little things that they don't think about, like the traffic lights, or if there's high water from like the rain yesterday, like we have to put those signs out, and we call people for that.
I've been with the comm center for almost four years, and I would say even veteran staff that have been here over 20 years learn something new every day. So, my biggest thing with improving is listening to everybody around me, and maybe they handled something the way that I feel like I should have handled it, and I'm going to use that in the future.
We absolutely are hiring, and industry-wide, there is a shortage of people who are willing to step up to the plate to become 911 operators and dispatchers.
If you've ever worked in a restaurant or in the retail industry, you have those customer service skills, and if you have empathy, we can teach you how to do this job. We can absolutely teach people who have those skills this job.
I love what I do, and that's the first time I can ever say that I love what I do, for the first time in my life.
Thank you, Jeff. When Jeff says hit the video, boy, we're coming a long way. I love it. I love it. I'm a marketer, I love it. It's great. So, we're going to come around and give you these. Thank you. This week is our National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and it's April 9th through the 15th. Proclamation and recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, 2023, April 9th through April 15th, 2023. This proclamation is in recognition of Deaf History Awareness Month and the contributions of Elizabeth Welpdale? Did I say it right? Welpdale, okay, to Hamilton County. And this is hugely important, the work that our interpreters do for us. It's so important to be inclusive for one Hamilton County. So, whereas National Deaf History Month is recognized from March 15th to April 15th to raise awareness surrounding the significant contributions of deaf and hard-of-hearing persons in the U.S., this year makes Ohio's fifth year celebrating Deaf History Month.
And whereas March 13th to April 15th marks three significant dates in deaf history education, including the opening of Gallaudet University and the appointment of Gallaudet University's first deaf president, and the opening of the nation's first public school for the deaf.
And whereas Elizabeth Beth Welpdale, is that correct? Where's she at? Okay, okay, Welpdale, has worked for decades to advocate for encourage and carve out change among the deaf and interpreting community here in Hamilton County in southwest Ohio. Elizabeth worked for 11 years as a vocational rehab counselor with opportunities for Ohioans with disabilities, where she assisted countless unemployed and underemployed Ohioans who are deaf, hard-of-hearing, low-vision, and deaf-blind community members, find their place of employment in their chosen fields of work.
Whereas Elizabeth currently works as a program manager at Hearing Speech Plus Deaf Center in the community services for the deaf department, where she has provided community employment services for the deaf and hard-of-hearing community for the last three years. She has recently received recognition for being number one in 2023 in Ohio in achieving the highest percentage, 69.44% of successful closures among all the community centers for the deaf across the state of Ohio.
And whereas Elizabeth has worked alongside the Cincinnati Police Department by not only teaching officers American Sign Language, but also participating as a speaker during their sensitivity training in how to be culturally appropriate when encountering a community member who uses American Sign Language to communicate. In 2014, when the city of Cincinnati was considering adding text messaging to their 911 system, Beth stepped up to offer her 30 years of experience as a deaf community member in order to keep our residents safe during emergencies.
Whereas Elizabeth made several COVID informational videos in American Sign Language that have been promoted by the Ohio Department of Health to help inform Ohioans of the risk of COVID, methods of prevention, testing information if exposed, and how to get vaccinated. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners, Hamilton County, Ohio, do hereby recognize March 15th through April 15th as Deaf History Awareness Month and celebrate the contributions of Elizabeth Welpdale on behalf of the residents of all of Hamilton County, Deaf History Awareness Month in all 49 municipalities. Okay, I'm going to ask Vice President Drehouse if she would like to say something.
Thank you. Congratulations. I want to say thank you to you. Thank you. I learned a little bit of sign during COVID, because of our interpreters, right, who were so important to communicating out information, such critical information, especially during COVID, during a pandemic. So, we so value that service we've carried into these meetings, which I think is extremely important, because we need to make sure everybody in this county, whether they're hearing individuals or signing individuals, feel welcome and part of the conversation as we talk through the issues here and create a dialogue with everybody throughout the county. So, congratulations to you. Thank you to our signers that are here at all of our meetings. We so value what you bring to this community. We so value what you bring to this community.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank you for all the great work that you have done. Everyone needs to hear the great work that we're doing and also the great work that's going on in the community. Nobody should be void from hearing what's going on here, and I want to thank you so much in extending yourself so much in so many areas to help others. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to join in. I want to acknowledge Vice President Drehouse, who I believe began this for the county, it began as press conferences, but now it's all of our meetings because our goal is to have one Hamilton County and to leave no one behind. Your work particularly during COVID, when many were afraid, didn't know what to do or where to turn, the work that you did to make sure that no one would be left behind and they would be able to get the information, be able to get the resources, you have helped save lives. And so we are happy to present this proclamation to you today and to recognize Deaf History Month to all of our citizens who have hard of hearing or who are deaf or who are like us getting older and need to be able to also do better at listening. So we present this proclamation to you on behalf of the citizens of Hamilton County. We would allow you, if you would like to say something, we would certainly allow you to do that.
So I just wanted to say thank you for the recognition, for all of the hard work that we, Hearing Speech and Deaf Center and myself have done for the deaf community. I really want to say thank you. I appreciate the recognition.
Yeah, I want to say one last thing about the year. So just lastly, Vicki, you've been with us all along, so thank you so much to you. And Jesse is here with us today. Jay was with us during COVID. The one thing I think you tried to teach us was to talk slower so it'd be easier for you to interpret. We have not learned the lesson. So we're right back to where we started. But anyways, thank you so much, Vicki, in particular, and also congratulations to you.
Vicki, thanks for bringing this to our attention. This could not have been possible without you bringing it to our attention. So thank you. You're part of our family anyway, so thank you. We're going to come around and present the proclamation. We have a public hearing running a few minutes behind. We have a public hearing, we're running a few minutes behind, so we're going to go to the public hearing. Mr. Beck.
Good afternoon. This is a public hearing for the 2023 Municipal Road Fund. We had 11, 12, excuse me, 12 projects that applied for funding this year. We are recommending nine of those get funded. That takes us up to the, the amount that we set aside each year. If we could put the slide up that shows the projects.
And we've got it.
You've got it in front of you. Okay, thank you. We have nine projects that, that takes us to the, just over the $2.1 million that we have annually for this. In addition to those nine projects, we have the City of Cincinnati Bridge Maintenance, which is the city county bridge agreement, where we set aside $1 million per year for the bridges within the city limits that are on county inspection requirements. So I, those projects are listed in front of you. I'd be glad to read those off. We have ones we're recommending are Gulf Manor, We Road, Forest Park, West Sharon Road, Elmwood Township Avenue and Vine Street, Norwood, Smith Road and Cartha Avenue, City of Cincinnati Worcester Road, North College Hill, West Galbraith Road, Newtown Church Street, Harrison Dry Fork, and Blue Ash McKinley Road. So this is an opportunity for anybody to make any comments on, on the proposed list. As far as I know, we don't have anybody here to speak for or against this.
Anyone here? Or 11? 112? I'll make a motion to, to the public.
Can I just make a comment real quick? So the, the three at the bottom, Eric, is it because we didn't have enough funding or were they not, did they not meet the criteria?
They did meet the criteria. They, we did not have the funding available. We typically appropriate 2.1 million per year. The projects we have are just over 2.1 million that we've approved, that are above the funding line. The other three are good projects. They just, we don't have enough money this year for them. They will apply again next year, I would assume, and should get funded then.
Can you remind us of the funding source?
That's the 20% tax funds from the, the license plate fees that, that are set aside for the municipalities.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas, any questions? Can I make a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Reese, Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Next, we got a public comment, we got one, William Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. Once again, thank you for the floor. There's a woman I want to apologize back there with the red hair. I associated her with a ex-CFL football player's girlfriend when he was playing for the, the CFL. He's, he's now a firefighter with, from what I understand, which we have a lot of people in public service here. He was a, he served, or he didn't serve, he played for multiple CFL Canadian teams, like maybe a guy like Tracy Jennings claims he played for like all these major league teams and, this is, you know, he talks a lot of stuff that I don't think he could talk in a public forum himself. And I'm giving some things that I told a person I called Tara back, back there, that was his girlfriend when he was a big shot CFL player, now he's a firefighter. I don't know, I haven't spoken to him for a long time. I apologize. I did something way back on, when I was on Facebook back in, I guess that was, it's a metaverse now, and I left that because of a guy named Hensley, which is weird, and a guy named Keterba, who, when he was becoming a football coach, he got very arrogant and said something that he may need to explain himself, what I deal with every day, that I had to swear into the FBI I would never participate in, by the way, but he may accuse me of. Anyways, when this guy was playing football in Canada, there was many stuff that happened after, when he got off the field. He was the, he was the dirtiest player in the, he would receive the word as the dirtiest player in the league. We had wars going on back then that were primitive to what they are now with the weapons that we have and the metaverse that, we need, we need these people to come and explain what happened there. When there was this guy from the Eskimos name, Facebook, that I taught Tara what they all knew to do what they knew now possibly through the metaverse to invade privacy through Facebook at the time. I don't know what it's like in the meta, but there was a guy named Chris Hughes, who was a big Eskimos fan, and I hacked his page. I've never hacked anything before, but Tara thought it was a brilliant way to kind of sneak into the Eskimos network, and I apologize to Tara, I'll be back next week. We have more serious stuff to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. There's just a couple of things. I wanted to provide an update regarding One Ohio. We had a meeting yesterday up in Columbus, and just as a reminder, I'm the regional rep from Region Two, which is Hamilton County. And we have been having conversations about the distribution of the funds and the percentages that go down to the regions versus any kind of statewide projects or investment. And so we resolved that issue after many months of conversation, and so I'm pleased to report that 100% of the funds for the first two years will go to the regions minus the overhead that it takes to run the foundation. That was made possible because we got an additional 3.6 million that was unexpected money into the foundation, and so we are peeling off that 3.6 for investment purposes for the next couple of years, which allowed us to give 100% of the rest of the money to the region. So it was a compromise. The regions agreed, the statewide appointees agreed, and so that money, the, the application, I think was also finalized yesterday. Region Two is going to have an application, a little, it'll include all of the information that everyone else has, but we also have an eye towards particularly challenged parts of our community that need assistance. We're also looking a lot at diversity and inclusion here in Hamilton County, and so we will be adding those pieces to our application to make sure that the providers that apply are hitting the mark that has been set forward by the board on which all three of us sit. So just an update on that, it's, it's been a long time coming. Also, while we're talking about statewide stuff, two county commissioners, Ram Onstitz from Wayne County and Jeff Fix from Fairfield County, I just left them over at CityLink. We did a tour of CityLink because they're trying to replicate the kind of services, the one stop shop nature of CityLink in their communities and take what's working here and have it benefit their own counties. And so I was glad to help host the tour with Michael Patton and John Mark over at CityLink. And then also Greg Lansman had his opening of his congressional office. It's at 961 East McMillan. So I was delighted to attend that, to make that connection with Greg, I'm sorry, Congressman Lansman and his staff, to make sure that we're connecting all the dots, whether it's a federal issue, a county issue, a local issue. We all work together to try to address the needs of people in Hamilton County. And so it was a good opportunity to see where the location is, to meet some of the staff and make some of those connections because, as I said, we, we all get calls that are relative to maybe immigration or social security or things that are not the bailiwick of the county, and so it's good to have that federal partner doing that kind of outreach to make sure that we all know how to access those services. And then lastly, I went to the 513 Relief Bus. I'm trying to get out as much as possible to thank the partners. It was well attended, as it has been every time I've gone out. At the North Central Library, the library's been a great partner, by the way, in providing some bricks and mortar locations so that the bus can pull up and then people can either go into the bus or into the bricks and mortar facility. So I know we're all excited about the bus and the partnerships that are there, so it was a great experience, and Travina and Ayesha are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
That was pretty fast. Commissioner Dumas.
So the interpreters, I'd just like to present a challenge for Vicki back in the back.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. I was invited over to Job and Family Services to participate in the photo for Wear Blue Day for Prevent Child Abuse Month. Very excited and delighted to be a part of that. We have a lot of great workers over there. And then earlier this morning, I went to OKI Board of Directors meeting, which looks at transportation in Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana. A lot of talk about the Brent Spence Bridge and funding and aesthetics and just keep your ear to the ground so you can be a participant in making some decisions or even sitting out at a public meeting to give your input. In addition, there are three initiatives that I have been talking about that are underway, beyond your imagination, which has been underway, and it's coordinated through Job and Family Services. The purpose is to make sure that those that are in adoptive foster or kinship care, that they get the same opportunities that other young people do as far as going to concerts and going to art museums and things like that. We may have a major announcement, I'm hoping, about where some of our children may be able to go very soon for an event. Also, our Small Events Grant that I, that my colleagues have supported, the deadline was March the 31st for people to put in for events within the community, outside of Cincinnati, concerts that they normally have, any sort of community events that maybe they're having difficulty funding, that they can apply to get additional funds up to $25,000. We initially had seven people that had applied, and it went all the way up to 30. So I just know that we'll be able to help some people during the summer. And also, I'm looking at the fluidity of the deadline that maybe we need to open up the deadline if we have not spent all the money. Sounds like we've spent all the money, and I'll probably be coming forward to my colleagues to try to increase some, some more funding. And last but not least, the Inspire Initiative that is getting started, we hired someone, as I said last time. I'm really hoping that our applications go on the website starting May the 1st. Inspire Initiative is for those community groups that are having a difficult time, they're mentoring young people, they're, you know, it may be dance teams, it may be sports teams, whatever it is, they can apply for up to $5,000 to get help in their registration fees and things like that. So we're on our way. I thank my colleagues for their support, and you'll be hearing more about those things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Want to remind people who want to know where the bus is going next to go to 513relief.org. I wanted to, a couple of things, on this Tuesday, we hosted the first ever Government Advocacy Day with the Greater Cincinnati Religious Association. They had a huge crowd, got a chance, I'm still hearing positive feedback, got a chance to present to us, and I thought their presentation was very good and informative. And I even ran into Laura Brunner from the Port Authority, and she said that they had a very frank conversation with them, and they're looking at trying to work on ways that they can work together. So it was very well attended, very well done, and I want to thank everyone who assisted with that. I know Robert Bell's office, I want to thank Veda Stevens, and I want to give a special shout out to him. He's the new interim Chief of Staff. I'm down to one person, and Veda is really working. I mean, he is balancing a lot of stuff because our office moves fast, and then you all, we all, we already have a lot of other responsibilities. So he just came in, and he must have heard his name. There he is, Veda Stevens, who was out working again. I just was complimenting you, Veda, and he would want everybody to know he graduated from Miami University. Just everywhere he goes, he's hollering Miami. Oh, Lord, oh, Lord. But I do want to thank him and our clerk's office for helping with that, everyone who put a helping hand to help make that day very successful. Also, we also are looking for interns. We got quite a few, we had a lot of interviews, a lot of, man, there's some sharp young people out here, and I mean, I wish I could hire all of them. So the ones I can hire, I'm going to be given to the other departments because we need good young people, they're ready to go, they're educated, they're ready to rope their sleeves, they got a lot of energy, and a lot of them asked me, I just want to learn more about what the county does. So I was very excited about that. It's going to be a very hard decision, but we have some great young people that applied. I want to thank the HR department for helping put all that together. It is, and I want to thank my colleagues because it's one of the initiatives, I wanted us to have a paid internship program and a paid fellowship program, and this is the first time that we've had that, so I'm very excited about it. Also, on Tuesday, we, to be, began in terms of the public, being able to start on how we're going to negotiate the next Bengals slash stadium deal. And I thought yesterday was really good. If people didn't get a chance to see it, go back and watch it on YouTube. The administration walks through the current lease, what we can, what we can't do, what are we looking at. This is a very complex thing, but we are certainly up to the challenge. I think it's very important, I think, maybe from a historical standpoint, when you think of the NFL, I don't think anywhere in the country that I can think of where three women are going to be at the table to negotiate an NFL deal. And I want to make sure that's important, that's historic, that's important as we move forward. But also, I think all three of us have indicated that we need all options on the table, all options. Initially, it might look good to say, oh, we're just going to do the bare bones, but our commission board has indicated, wait a minute, what, what we saw was just if we kept the doors open and keep the pipes working, and we know that that's not the real cost. We have asked for We have asked for a myriad of putting everything on the table so that the taxpayers know we looked at everything. If we have the bare bones, but some additional things that need to happen, here's what it is. If we put a roof on it, here's what, not just what it costs, but what can we bring in? And then, does it even make sense to look that way and maybe have to have something that doesn't last 10 years? And then, we're back here again talking about building something? Or do we look at a brand-new deal that is multifaceted? And one of the things that I'm really pushing us, we're such a small market, when you look at the market of the gazillionaires, we need to be looking at something that can be multifaceted. I don't think we're in a position anymore to have one-stop facilities that only can be open for a couple of weeks and that's it. And we still have a 365-day deal. We have people out there saying, we want an arena, we want to expand Covitz Center. Maybe we should look at something more broader and see if we can put together a facility that can house our Bengal games, can get the big concerts, can have 365-day events, can bring national conventions. Maybe that might be something we need to look at. So, we've asked for everything to be on the table and I wanted to make sure that was clear with our administrator. Everything on the table. We don't want someone to say, man, why did they do that? And this thing is a dinosaur. So, we want to make sure, we also understand that the lease and the stadium have to coincide. We can't have a stadium, we don't have a tenant, can't have a tenant and then they say the stadium in 10 years is no good. It's obsolete. So, the question is, what's the best deal for the taxpayers? I think all three of us indicated that the deal we have now, not a good deal for the taxpayers. And I think all of us were very clear in our questioning with that. We must have a diversified funding model. Right now, we're at about 94%. The taxpayers are on the hook. We can't roll like that. Tennessee's getting a brand-new stadium with only 33% on the taxpayers. They're getting something new with only 33%. We're talking about holding on and hanging on with a 94% risk factor and cost factor. So, I think we always say we want to reduce the risk, reduce the cost on the taxpayers. We want a more balanced approach. And then, we want to make sure that we're not left with an asset that is not in the proper way. So, I'm also asking, I'm saying this to Mr. Ludo, I want to have an appraisal, give us what's the appraised value of the property and then appraised value of the building so that we, as we move forward, we know, has it depreciated? Has it appreciated? What is the appraised value? So, these are the terms that you're going to hear us talking about, appraised value, risk factor, cost factor. You know, we're going to look at technology, new versus old, old versus new, reducing the cost. Those are the kinds of things that we're looking at because Tennessee, I thought, was interesting, their model. 33% on the taxpayers only, $500 million from the state. They got a percentage coming from the sales, not the sales tax, but the hotel motel tax. So, that means when you bring in the fans and all that, out-of-town people are helping pay for the stadium. And then, their sales tax is relegated to around the stadium. So, that means it would relegate to the banks. It doesn't go all out in Anderson Township and Clees and all, it stays right in that area and then they're able to come up with a brand-new product at a market that we have to compete with, not only in football, but also in the tourism side of things. So, all that stuff is fascinating with me. I love to get involved with it. And we are going to be getting out of this room and out and visiting these stadiums to see how they're doing it, see what it looks like and even going to our own stadium, not as a fan, but with our magnifying glasses to see, is this, what does it look like? Is the concrete cracking? All those kinds of things. So, we're looking forward to it and I just wanted people to know that we're going to be very thorough as we look into this next potential deal. We're looking forward to working collaboratively. The other thing, I got a chance to be at the press conference today with Congressman Lansman, which is, he was mentioned earlier. He held a press conference and he didn't just have a press conference, he brought in Mitch Landrew, who used to be the mayor of New Orleans. I went to Grambling, so you know, we had that, they had that Louisiana connection. But, he is the senior advisor to the president. And that press conference had the mayor, myself, Chamber of Commerce. And the question is, what happens after the announcement? The president came and we had a bipartisan announcement, but now it's time for the rubber to meet the road. And we had ODOT come in and present and we asked some very hard questions. Mr. Ludo, you'll be happy to know in front of the president's advisor, I told him, take it back, we as Hamilton County need to be at the table. We got rejected, so we're not at the table. So, I told him, what can you do to help us get to the table? So, they're supposed to be looking into it, but we want to be at the table and Mr. Beck, our engineer, has been leading that and has told us, we got to have some teeth. And right now, we don't have any teeth. So, I also talked last night to Director March Banks from Ohio Department of Transportation. He and I have known each other for years during my days at the State House and I indicated directly to him that it must have diversity on the front end and not on the back end. So, they are supposed to be working on that as well. I did also attend the OKI meeting, now on the Executive Committee, and the finance meeting and then the main meeting as Commissioner Dumas had indicated earlier. And then, I also had a meeting with Cincy Smiles, I don't know if they're here today. It's a great meeting, actually. We're going to be moving forward with their request today. But, I wanted to meet with them because it'll be about 400,000 total that we've spent with them and they do some good work. And just wanted to know how we break down those silos and work together. We've got a bus, we've got a dental chair. They used to have a yellow bus, they don't have it anymore, but now they'll be able to have a state-of-the-art bus and they've got state-of-the-art people. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to work that out quickly to be able to provide more services to people because everybody can't get out to Delhi as they've indicated. And right now, they're working out of their car mobily and said, maybe they'll be able to work with us. So, it's good to have these meetings with people because we get to talking, people say, oh, my God, we can work together. So, we're looking forward to that. And then, lastly, I do want to say that in that press conference, the question was, how many jobs are needed for the Brent Spence Bridge and the Western Hills Viaduct and how are we going to get people to the jobs? And I was able to step to the plate and talk about our board and how we've used federal dollars, American Rescue dollars for workforce. And today, we're, have on our agenda, we anticipate will go forward, a partnership that's unique with the Urban League and Labor. And we'll have people ready to go to fill these jobs. And it would be great if they had some kind of MOU with this program so that now we go from training to actual people getting on this job. Wouldn't that be great to have on their resume that they worked on the Brent Spence Bridge or they worked on the Western Hills Viaduct? So, Mitch Landrew was so excited about it and they said, man, we need to know more about what Hamilton County is doing because we are really setting the trend as it relates to ARPA. So, with that, I would ask on the by leave, if you, if my members would not mind, we have a by leave on here. I'd like to advance the Cincy, no, not Cincy, Cincy Smiles. I'd like to advance Cincy Smiles, if you all don't mind. And I would like to also advance the Urban League because I know they have another program to get to, if you don't mind. Just those were two items, if, Commissioner. Okay. So, we'll advance the by leave right at this time, by leave number, by leave number three. Okay. Number three. That happens to me, trying to look cute and I need to put my glasses on. Item by leave number three, I'd like to advance.
Sarah Adams is here from the administration who can, was planning to walk the board through these two particular items. So, Sarah, did you want to?
Yeah.
Sure.
Just a quick background on Urban League. That was a workforce development grant. That was a grant that we were able to actually help nine other organizations with. We currently have approved, I lost it, with us approving the other two today, that actually only leaves us with one left that we're currently under negotiations with. This program is an expansion of workforce development programs and just for the two areas we're doing today, it'll be IT and construction and trades. But, there was six defined areas where we were really trying to break that down under the ARPA rules to make sure that we were really getting those trade industries and people into those careers and into those organizations for high-demand careers. One of the key things was to reduce barriers to participation and Urban League's done a great job of that as well. For theirs, they are seeking their funding to replicate the Building Futures Program. It was a little bit different. They did present on it last in February, if you guys remember that wonderful presentation that they did with us. It is a pilot program, so it didn't quite mean the scope. So, we appreciate the commission backing us and listening to the administration about going ahead and moving this one forward and doing a contract with them. They plan on working with the Columbus Urban League and many partners in this organization. It will be a 12-week program. It is for low-income residents pursuing careers in construction industries. They will partner with 14 other skills and it's different things like plumbing, electricians, ironworkers, kind of those core organizations that kind of keep everything moving and running in the organizations that we're working with. Their goal currently is to fund 20 participants. I know that question kind of came up last time, would we do more if we could? With this funding, just for transparency, the actual max amount was 225,000, which is what we were able to go ahead and work with them on. So, that's kind of where that 20 came in. Because it is a pilot program, they will be starting this from the bottom, working with Urban League and Columbus. And we have Kristy here who presented last time, if you guys have any questions.
Any questions?
I have no questions. I'm just, thank you for the flexibility, both with Building Futures, with staff, with the commission. This wasn't an easy fit, but we all felt it was a high priority. So, very, very excited about launching this and hoping to build on it in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Dumas?
No questions. We're excited about it. I had, the only thing I would add is, Mr. Ludo, I'd asked about, is the future of these projects, or our futures, by the way, no, but these projects that we, this workforce that we could start looking at some MOUs for projects that we have that connect the program, people in the program, to maybe have pilots with the jobs that we, that we're going to be doing.
Yeah, Madam President, we're looking in, we're looking into that in terms of how we work through our procurement process, both legally and administratively, to figure out how we would connect our projects into this program. It certainly is something that makes a lot of sense, so.
Awesome. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number four.
Second?
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes. Congratulations, Kristy Coons, who was here as the CEO, and Mr. Ryan Smith from AFL-CIO, I mean Griffin, Lord have mercy, Ryan Griffin, AFL-CIO. The main part I got right is AFL-CIO. Thank you all so much and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You don't have to stay, I know you got to go. Okay. By leave, advancing the by leave number three.
Okay. I don't think Cincy Smiles was able to make it today. This by leave came a little quick. So, I think she, Sonia, had actually other obligations today, but she's been a pleasure to work with, as you have said, when you had your meeting with her. This falls under our youth resilience grants. We had a massive turnout for our youth resilience grants. We were able to actually work with 27 organizations. We have approved five to date. We did that the last meeting. We have 18 under negotiations and we plan on doing four today. So, these are moving rather quickly and they're moving fast, but it's an outstanding program. Having kids, myself, knowing how COVID kind of made them isolated and home from school and those things, these programs are one, this is one that's kind of near and dear to my heart, getting these and working with these organizations. Part of the policy of this is that it had to be an expanding of a youth organization ages 9 to 19. The goal of it was to combat social isolation and just basically getting youth out and about and working with getting over self-esteem, confidence, connectives, social and mental health is what this one will kind of fall under. So, with Cincy Smiles, their program, sorry, I'm really short. Their program, we were able to fund 147,300. Their program will serve the 9 to 19-year-olds via their Dental Road Crew that President Dumas, or President Reese, I'm sorry, kind of spoke about earlier with that. The Road Crew will expand oral health into the community. They will combat barriers, we're kind of meeting people where they are, transportation, if they have health insurance issues, geographical barriers, making sure that they're out in the community and getting to them where they need to be. Their program is also going to help students with their self-esteem. They're going to help by mitigating pain, helping people with tooth decay, making sure kids kind of get their smile back and being able to be out in the community and healthy, fixing broken teeth, discolored teeth, those things that seem like they could be a little bit small, but really has a big impact, especially on a child and their self-esteem. The program awful, also will provide oral health and nutritional importance to try to combat ongoing causes. And the expansion will also allow, this is a big program, the youth ambassadors to help promote the program in nearby schools. That is basically where youth who have went through this program and have been helped by Cincy Smiles will be utilized to go out into the community, work with ongoing youth. And it also gives them the ability to learn, work in workable skills and learn how to do public speaking, be able to be in their community and garner some workforce skills as well. So, they will be doing, this will probably be one of our biggest on reaching youth and they are hoping to help 275 youth with this program and with this amount of funding. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. I wanted to ask, in addition to this, I know that we're excited about doing some, doing something with our bus. I wanted to ask, Mr. Ludo, where would that, I mean, is that something that could move forward? I know it's not with this particular grant, but something else.
Yeah, so, we'll work that through a service, the service agreement as we do with all of our other partners. So, that is something likely that we'll just be able to execute administratively. We can keep the board apprised as we do it. But, I know from the conversations that have been had that they are excited about doing that. I think they're actually right now in the process of doing some due diligence today and tomorrow on the bus to figure out what types of services they can provide with the assets that are available. And I'll let the board know when we're ready to advance that, but it sounds like everyone's on the same page.
Okay, great. I would like to expedite that. I've been asking for dental before we even built the bus. That's why we built it with a dental chair. And when I talked to them, I don't know if it was mixing up, but they had, they weren't aware of it. And then, they were excited because you got a brand-new, state-of-the-art equipment and they're coming out of the trunk of their car. So, those things, I just want to keep in mind as we're looking at these RFPs, I just don't want to go back to silos. I want to make sure that we're leveraging and partnering and collaborating as much as possible. So, I want to thank my colleagues, that's why I wanted to hold it a week so I can get more information. I know I had voted for some other dollars, over 200 some other dollars for Cissy Smile and I didn't ask any questions. But, when we get this, now we're up to $400,000 and I've got a dental chair on a bus that we had put on there and they said we couldn't find anyone who would want to do it on the bus. And then, here they are saying, hey, we would have loved to done it. So, I hope we can expedite that, but I do love the work that they're doing. And I want to open it up if there's any questions about this, Commissioner Drehouse.
I just wanted to say that, yes, Cissy Smiles has been a great community partner for many years, especially in the schools, working with kids and as you say, getting their confidence back through some of the dental work that they're doing. So, I'm glad that they have this workforce development for youth program. And I, it's, this grant, and I'm glad the collaboration with the bus is moving forward, but this grant is not associated with the bus. This is a grant for a program that they offered through the RFP process. So, it sounds like we're working on, with them on a couple of different levels here, but I'm glad to support this and I'm glad it's in front of us today.
No, I appreciate it. And I know this wasn't, that I want to just highlight, just like we just did with the Urban League, they didn't quite fit the RFP, but we're the final decision-makers. And where I'm at is, if we got a bus that the county has and a program that the county has approved and we got a dental chair on there and we've been saying, I would say that if, one of my other commissioner friends, they have initiatives and if they've been pushing this, I would have made sure that the RFP included, instead of being a silo. And I can't blame Cissy Smiles, they didn't even know. So, I want to say, I want to go away from how we used to do it, just give them money and then the people run on. I'm trying to have a one Hamilton County piece and so, that's why I had some issues. I'm trying to have a one Hamilton County piece, and so that's why I had some issues. Just because they got a RFP don't mean we got a vote on it. And we've done that before, we've changed RFPs, we, we've, because we said, hey, we'd like to go this way. So I just want to put on the record, if there's any other dental, I would like the RFP to include the bus. There's, I don't want silos anymore. I've said that over and over, we did that for 25 years, or before, way before I got here, and all of us got here. We want to do something different. We're not sitting here with an asset that we put all this money in with an empty chair. And then we get a company come in, and no one says, hey, this makes sense. Now, I'm not in the RFP room. If I was in there, I would stop it before it got to this level. But we don't do the RFP. So that's why I do want to thank Mr. Dumas, that did allow me to ask the question, talk to them, and at the end of the day, they even said, wow, if we had known, we would love to do this. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to move forward in the future, because this is $400,000 to one organization, when you put all of it together, when you add it up. And, you know, $400,000, and nobody thought to ask about the dental chair that we got sitting on a bus, that doesn't make quite sense to me. But now we've got to correct it, and I'm looking forward to it. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one quick question. This is an expansion program. I was wondering, the age nine to 19, is it be cut, why didn't we start earlier? Is it because they have other programs that deal with the younger children?
We do have your Inspire program, that's coming up, we're hoping that might-
As far as dental, Cissy Smiles, do they?
Oh, do they? We chose the nine to 19 age range. The reason we chose that age range was, it seemed to be that those were the most affected by the social isolation, more than the younger children. And we were trying to make sure and looking at, we kind of looked at it in conjunction with our teen suicide prevention grants as well, on the ages that were vastly affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, not saying that younger children weren't affected, but they are a little bit more resilient than some of the older kids in dealing with some of the unfortunate things like bullying and things that kids have to deal with in today's world. So that's why we, as a panel, decided to go with the nine to 19 age range, to really facilitate those organizations and really target those, to make sure that they had everything they needed to combat that social isolation, get back more to peer-to-peer, and being more face-to-face, and just being together. So that's why we decided to kind of tighten it a little bit and not go on a younger age scale.
You hit me at the first two sentences. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to adopt bye leave three.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. Thank you so much for your work. Mr. Ludo, your comments, or do you want to take bye leave one and two, or how do you want to?
Yeah, I'm happy to take bye leaves one and two. Just a quick comment, commissioners, just wanted to, as the board is aware, and as it has been in the media as well, we do have an issue with canine distemper virus at the animal shelter, so I just wanted to, again, although this has been out publicly, just wanted to use this time as well, just to let folks know that Cincinnati Animal Care is who the county contracts with for running the animal shelter, is doing, Assistant Administrator Brugan and I met with them today virtually. They are working all hands on deck to resolve this issue. This is not just a problem at our animal shelter, this is a community-wide problem. We're seeing it down in Kentucky and up north as well now. But they are dealing with this problem, they're, they're using three different facilities now, including our current facility and two other facilities to help deal with the, with the animals that might be impacted, and quarantine them to the best that they, that they can. Right now, I think the major message to get out is that they are limiting the intake of, of, of dogs to those that are, that are public, essentially public safety threats at this point. It's just important that we try to keep animals out of that facility as much as possible while we try to resolve the issue. And sometimes that means for animals that are not public safety threats, to do everything we can to keep them in the community, as they are more likely to find their way home and be reunited, reunited with their families at, at that, at that time. So just wanted to get that out there, and again, there'll be more media on this as the situation continues. I know that the animal care, Cincinnati Animal Care is working with a national expert on the distemper virus, as they look to treat the, the dogs that are, that are in care. So again, just wanted to make that notice publicly. And there are two bye leaves that are remaining. I'm gonna ask the board's indulgence on one of these, and, and ask Mr. Beck as well. We have the engineer's report on the annexation of 3.863, 3.863 acres from Columbia Township to the city of the Village of Indian Hill. That's the engineer's report, it was referred to the engineer, I think, last week. Quick turnaround, got here this week. Under a state law, we are required to turn around an annexation of this nature within 30 days of the receipt of the petition. So I am not, so we, we have a little bit more time on this, this is the type of annexation, there is no real discretion on, the county has to affect this, this particular annexation. I am not aware, though, and Eric, maybe you can help, help me with this, if Columbia Township is at least aware this came in on the 5th, I believe, of April? And we have 30 days from that time to do this. We talked a little bit beforehand, Eric was doing a little bit of research, just wanted to see if Columbia Township was aware of this. Not that they necessarily need to be under the law, given this type of annexation, but just thought as a matter of practice, if they are aware, I think, I would recommend we go ahead and pass this today. If not, I think just notice to them that this is being considered, so that, and then bringing it back next week might make some sense.
To the best of my knowledge, I've checked with all my staff, and nobody has spoken to Columbia Township on this. We reviewed the plat and the, and the submissions, and that's basically what we did.
Okay.
Did not reach out to the township.
And again, just, just as a, as an administrative note, this is not the type of annexation that really entails any discretion by the county. This is a situation where Indian Hill is annexing property owned by Indian Hill from another jurisdiction, and it is actually surrounded by parcels owned by Indian Hills. There's no real conflict here, and there's, there's been no public objection. But again, just as a matter of practice, in terms of making sure the community that is having the, the land annexed from it, I think it would be good to just touch base with them, make sure that they're aware. So I would, Leslie, I don't know if you have anything that you wanted to add, look like you were trying to chime in, so. Oh, no, okay, sorry.
So Jeff, then you would receive the?
We'd receive item, bye leave one for the record, and then we would just table bye leave two for one week, and bring it back following notification, which is still within our timeframe of the 30 days to act on this.
Okay. Commissioners, you, okay. All right, so I make a motion that we receive bye leave one and table bye leave two.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, and no further bye leaves.
I, I do want to highlight that we've had, I know that we've had two meetings without legal representation here. I know that, the good news is, Michael is usually with us, just had a beautiful baby, that's wonderful. But we do need to have someone here, just to, I feel a lot more comfortable, I think, Commissioner Dumas had raised that question as well, to have, make sure that when we're doing this, we've got some legal representation. So I don't know if they have others over there that Mike could fill in.
I'll follow up.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we're gonna go to the calendar. Mr. Beck, I thought you were gonna sit down, didn't you? Not too long, you're back up.
Don't worry about that. I have three items for you today. Item number one is a resolution authorizing a consultant agreement with Urgis and NIPL for engineering services for the improvement of Old Kellogg Road Bridge, which is B0087, is located in Anderson Township. It's a contract for not to exceed $107,366, and that money comes from the Permissive Auto Fund. Item two is Mount Alverdo Road and Padretti Avenue roadway improvements. This is allowing us to go out to bid, this is located in Delhi Township, with engineer's estimate of $2,112,655,000. Will come out of the Permissive Auto Tax Fund, and we have a grant for $1,456,385 from Sorda. So again, another project that we've been able to get grant funding on. And item number three is Simpson Avenue Roadway Improvements, allowing us to put this project out to bid. This is located in Springfield Township. The engineer's estimate is $506,000. $213,356 will come out of Permissive Auto, and a Sorda grant of $292,644.
Okay, any questions?
Questions?
Well, I think that's great, just leveraging the funds like that, it's awesome.
Okay. I make a motion to approve items one through three.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, we'll go to our commission administration, and Mr. Ludo?
We'll bring Ms. Adams back up to continue her discussion of, of some of our ARPA grants.
So I won't go through everything all over again, since I just went through it for you guys. So on item number five, we are actually working on approving the contract with Perskollis for $200,000. This does fall under our workforce development grants. Their program is to expand their Greater Cincinnati IT program, which is a 12- to 15-week tuition-free program, which I think is pretty fabulous, to actually find a program that is tuition-free. They are looking to help an additional 24 participants, and it's for the in-demand field of IT support, network infrastructure, software engineering, and cybersecurity. Perskollis, they do have goals to provide a pathway for underserved individuals who have been systematically excluded from traditional pathways to access skills to thrive in high-wage careers, which we know IT is considered one of the high-wage careers and very in-demand at this time. It is tuition-free for two years with follow-up support services, including career advancement, access to alumni course offers, offerings, and more. They did provide us with some benchmarks, which I always like, because I'm a numbers person. They do want to have an 85% graduation rate, and an 80% of their graduates to gain employment after they're done with the program, which I think is a really good numbers for making sure that they're really working with anyone that is going through the program. And we have Dr. Roger Burns here, Managing Director, to go ahead and discuss that.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. As she mentioned, Perskollis, which you may not know, is we have been in Cincinnati for a decade. Our organization is 27 years old, but in that decade, we've helped almost 900 people begin their career in tech. And our focus is on people traditionally underrepresented in tech. 70% of our learners are African-American, 30% are women, and if you look at the face of tech, most of the time, it looks like me. And so we are really being able to create alternative pathways to very gifted, talented individuals for whom college may not have been an option for a variety of reasons, but they have a passion and aptitude for technology. And our commitment to them is not only the training and professional development, but the pathway to connect them with employers for thriving wage jobs. When we mean thriving wage, we're talking 70, 80, $90,000 a year jobs. Maybe not that first one, but over the next two years with the alumni upskilling, the first job may be a living wage job, but within a couple of years, you're moving up into tech jobs that without our program would not have been accessible. What also distinguishes us is our learners graduate owing not a dime to anyone. It's the support we get from, or, you know, organizations across the area, but also from you all, to make it possible for us to change the face of tech in Hamilton County and meet some really critical job skill needs that all of our employers are having. Because as you noticed earlier, like, trying to get the screens up, somebody's got to know how to do that, and these are skills that are not going to go out of date or out of use. Happy to answer any questions, you all.
Open it up, any questions?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
You're in Cincinnati, but we're in Cincinnati.
We are in the City Link Center. We are not quite an original tenant there, but we've been there over eight years. Bus routes, wraparound services to help our learners eliminate barriers, that's a key, really key partnership for us.
John Mark was bragging about you earlier today.
Awesome, thank you.
So just for a second, I'm gonna skip item number six and kind of circle back to that, since it's a little bit different than our actual grants, and I'll just move on to item number seven, which is gonna fall under our youth resiliency grants. That will be with Price Hill for $122,500. Their program will target students age seven to 18 who live or attend school in Price Hill, and is to actually join their after-school My Cincinnati program that they currently have. The My Cincinnati is an ensemble-based music education program. The students actually will meet five days a week with the ability to learn an array of instruments, like the violin, flute, trombone, along with voice instruction. By playing music, students are able to build relationships, learn to collaborate, and develop technical, intellectual, and emotional skills, and their parents get to learn how to, you know, shut doors. I have a little one that plays the flute, so it's quite interesting at times. My Cincinnati program plans to expand their current program from 85 to 150 students. Due to the decline in revenue that they had in 2022, they were able to use, they used to have 150 students, they declined in their revenue due to COVID and lost some different fundings, so they had to back that off to 85. So with this additional funding, they're able to actually go back up to their additional numbers that they were able to expand to be before, and actually get the service back into the community more. And we have Mr. Matro, giving the Development Director here to answer any questions.
And I brought Bernardo Lopez, he's the My Cincinnati Director with me, to talk a little bit about the program. We're just so excited to be, to have an award, and it just means so much to the kids and the students, and we're really appreciative.
Hi, commissioners, I'm Bernardo Lopez, the Director of My Cincinnati, and we're just really thankful, and I'm here saying thanks on behalf of the kids, because we're able to give 150 kids next year completely free, high-quality music, sorry, tears me up sometimes, talking about it, high-quality music education, completely for free. Tuition would be around $5,000, and we provide everything for them. So we have a staff of 12 people, completely dedicated to teaching these kids after school, Monday through Friday, and thank you for your help to be able to do this. And I'm happy to answer any questions about Price Hill, or My Cincinnati, or our program.
Awesome. Vice President Drehouse?
Yeah, so I've heard your kids play, and they're very good. Remind us of the kinds of kids that you serve.
Yeah, totally. So we, we serve the entire Price Hill community. Price Hill is, I don't know if I can say this here, but the best neighborhood?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if I can say that, but as a, of course, a resident and someone who's dedicated there completely, it's the most diverse neighborhood in Cincinnati, both racially and socio-economically. And we have an emerging and ever-growing immigrant population there, too. So we have many languages spoken, many religions practiced, and kids from all over the race-class spectrum coming together, using music and ensemble as a model for community building.
Yeah, you're breaking down barriers.
Oh, yeah.
And I lived in Price Hill for 25 years, so-
Amazing.
I can't disagree with your assessment of Price Hill, so, thank you, thank you for being here.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Dumas? Thank you, Madam Chair. You guys are why we're here. I'm just to hear you talk about how appreciative you are, and to just visually think about all the children that will be impacted, that's why we're here. And music brings out gifts that, you know, people didn't even know that they had, so I thank you for doing what you do with the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, probably Susan Blitz is probably watching from Price Hill, so I've definitely, she's all about the students, and always saying, you know, great things happening there. So I think this is wonderful. We need more of our children being able to play the instruments and be involved in music. And so, you know, who knows, one of those kids go on, they'll be telling this story, I got involved, or I was introduced to it. So yeah, just kudos, and happy to support this.
Thank you. And I'd love to formally invite all of you to our May 18th concert. And it will be in our Arco facilities, which are a brand-new Price Hill facility. So May 18th, it's a Thursday, we're gonna have an all-day event in both stages, so, thank you. So May 18th, it's a Thursday, we're going to have an all-day event in both stages, so thank you.
Great, awesome.
I'll follow up with them on details for that for you.
That's right.
So item number eight is Learning Grove for 145,000. Learning Grove is actually working to do and expand a Navigo College and Career Program that will be implemented. It was implemented in about 20 schools across Kentucky. And just for a little, Learning Grove and Families Forward, they just combined in January after they had kind of applied for some grants and different things with us. So you guys will kind of see how things kind of align between those two organizations as we move forward with some of these. But the Navigo program was implemented in 20 schools in Kentucky, and they're looking to expand that program into Withrow University High School and serve a minimum of 60 students. The program connects with businesses and industries across the tri-state. They collaborate with those industries, and the purpose is basically to develop pipelines within the schools. They're wanting to assist businesses and the, into mentoring. They work directly with the students. They're wanting to basically make sure that we know and students know what businesses need in the 21st century, what careers are needed in the 21st century, and how to go ahead and connect those students into those careers, into those businesses in the tri-state, and give them those opportunities in high school and moving forward so that they're not just getting out of high school and not being aware or not knowing what avenues or potential they might have moving forward and what they're wanting to work on. Their big goal is just bridging those gaps and making sure that they're working directly with those students. We actually have three representatives here today. We have Jenny Lamoth from Navigo, she's our Director of Coaching and Mentoring, Emily Lewis, who's the Chief of Staff, and Michelle Tony, who's the Director of Families Forward.
Hello, everyone, how are you doing today?
Doing great.
Good, good. My name is Michelle Tony, I'm the Executive Director of Families Forward. Families Forward is a program that has worked within Cincinnati Public School System for quite some time under the Community Learning Center model. We are currently in four of our Cincinnati Public Schools, Bon Hill, Carson, Hayes Porter, and Withrow University. We had the opportunity to merge earlier this year with Learning Grove, and we felt that our services were a good continuum when you go from pretty much cradle to career. And this is one of those projects that has stemmed from that. We are in Withrow High School, as I said. We provide resource coordination as well as after-school programming. And the Navigo program would work with us in conjunction with the staff at Withrow to connect the students, not only that we work with, but throughout the school. I'm sure you know that Withrow has approximately about 1,300 students that attend the college. And the opportunity to be able to bridge them with the community to pipeline them to jobs, potentially internships, and be able to get a first-line approach with employers is very important to us, as well as to Navigo.
Hi, I'm Jenny Lamoth, the Director of Coaching and Operations for Navigo. And as was already discussed, we are working with about 21 school districts in Northern Kentucky. And we work really diligently to ensure that students understand where their aptitudes lie, not just their interests. We know that students can't say they're interested in a career if they have no idea what it is. So we've worked really hard, and we're excited to bring that into Cincinnati and work with the students at Withrow to help them expose their aptitudes and understand that they may have great aptitude for some really high-end demand careers that they can be very successful in. And so we do that, and then we connect the students through workforce pipeline, through apprenticeships, guest speakers, internships, co-ops, job shadowing, all of those opportunities. We work with over 250 businesses in the tri-state area. So again, we're just super excited to cross that big ocean and come into Cincinnati and partner with Family Forward.
Awesome. Any questions?
A big community learning center model, so thank you for participating in that way, and thanks for what you do.
Thank you, no questions.
Thank you so much, and you're in the greatest high school of all time.
I knew you would say that.
And I just, I couldn't resist.
I knew you would.
The Withrow Tigers are looking, but, but no, thank you so much for all that you're doing. Really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're down to our last youth resiliency grant. Item number nine, which is the Talbert House for 60,000. They are actually working to expand their Camp Possible, and they're going to approximately serve 95 youth with low, moderate income and an appropriate mental health diagnosis. So this one's a little bit different than some of our other programs with having that mental health diagnosis and really targeting that diverse population of youth. This is a tuition-free camp that provides breakfast and lunch for all campers daily. The camp is Monday through Thursday from 9 to 3 in June and July. All the campers receive not only activities, but they will also receive group and individual therapy to assist with barriers of diagnosis. The expansion will assist with fees for field trips and enrichment opportunities for campers who cannot afford camp and for non-Medicaid transportation. So just a little background on that, they have a lot of their recipients are receiving Medicaid, and they can, are eligible for transportation through their Medicaid services. But one of their major barriers that they brought to us was the students that didn't have Medicaid and didn't have those transportation opportunities and that barrier to not be able to participate in the program. So that was something that was very important to them to make sure was under this grant so they could actually assist those other individuals with transportation and making sure that they could come to camp. The camp does allow the challenged youth to engage, strengthen social relationships with peers and adults, and build their self-esteem. Just for reference, from last year, the youth that attended the camp, they stated 72.2% showed improvement in their behavioral health, 86% felt important during camp, and 83.6% enjoyed attending camp and would return. So that says something about their numbers and the people that are wanting to return this year. That's a pretty exciting program. And we have Representative Anna Johnson, the Associate Director, here for Talbert House.
Good afternoon. And my name is Anna Johnson, and I'm the Associate Director of Camp Possible. That was the best explanation I have heard. Yes, you basically said everything I was going to, so that's wonderful. This is my first year, full year, being Associate Director. I had some experiences last year, being at camp every day, being directly with the kids, going on the field trips, just seeing their transformation over the summer. And, you know, our kiddos are often excluded because of their behavioral health concerns. You know, so field trips during the school year, they can't go. There are some barriers such as cost. And so I love that camp can offer those types of activities. One, during the summer, when there's not a whole lot going on, if you don't have transportation, money to pay for camps, things like that. But they also get really cool experiences. This year, we have planned to go to Coney Island, the zoo, Parky's Farm, Green Acres, Urban Air. And then we have a stay field trip, and we're having the SPCA come in and a petting zoo. So it's just a really cool time to be with the kiddos and to experience new things alongside them.
Thank you, Vice President Drehouse.
Thanks for what you do, yeah, it just sounds like a fantastic program. I do love it.
Thank you.
I just want to say, this is, I think, our second grant dealing with camps. This is very important because in the summertime, that's when there's idle time because the kids aren't in school. And camps are so expensive now. It's so, a lot different than when I was younger. And it's very difficult for some parents, a lot of parents, to be able to afford to put their children in camp. So now they're just staying around with idle time. So I really, really believe in getting more of our children into camps during the summer so that minds can continue to develop and they can be doing positive activity. So I'll definitely support this.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So that was our last one for the
That was our last youth resiliency grant. So Commissioners, I didn't know if you wanted to vote on those en masse?
Yes.
And then I, myself and Sarah can cover the final two administrative ones in the regular agenda?
Sure. So I make a motion to approve items number five, seven, eight, and nine.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes, thank you.
And I only have one more, it's good.
Oh, you have?
I have one more because we already did Urban League, which was number four, and then we did the Bi-Leaf. So we just have number six on the agenda left.
We have six and 10.
10 is not mine.
Okay, we're here with number six.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought you said number four, and I, and
Well, we did number four.
We did number four, right? I'm sorry, I thought you said I have one more to do, number four, and I was like, we already did that one.
Oh, no, we have number six.
Okay, got it, yes.
Okay, so number six is a little different. This is just a resolution to amend the ARPA plan allocation to assist the prosecutor's office with criminal case backlog. Just for a little bit of background, we are requesting the ARPA budget change to hire up to four paralegals to process the backlogs that they're administering due to the COVID-19 pandemic, just to support the prosecutor's office. A little bit of the reasoning for the backlog is that jury trials were suspended for nearly two years, which created a significant backlog because they weren't actually administering those felony cases in trials. And then also, the Justice Center moved from in-person visitation to phone calls, utilization of tablets, any way to get away from that face-to-face. But with adapting and new technology that came with a lot more phone calls and a lot more data for the prosecutor's office to have to review, especially for the high-end offenders. So Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office has requested additional staff to monitor high-threat inmate communications based off the two-year backlog and court cases and the volume of critical communications requiring them to review. We are requesting a budget change to hire the four paralegals to process the backlogs by utilizing remaining funds from the premium pay, which is $533,579.57, and $201,420.43 from the nonprofit assistance grants that is also remaining, and move that to the prosecutor's backlog item of up to $735,000.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I was just wondering about the, I guess, the backlog. We had this on our agenda before, and now is it, why is it on there again? I'm just wondering.
So it was removed before, it was never voted on, so it was removed just so some questions could get answered amongst the board, and now it's just back on now, so.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't
The questions come up, I think everyone thought that it's already been done and it actually hadn't been, so, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Well, not until they come to a meeting. Okay. I think you had the question last time.
Yeah.
Okay, item number
Item number 10, that's item number, so you want to take that?
Yeah, we'll take it. Item number six, make a motion to approve.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Now, item number 10 is just a budgetary item to establish the project for the Regional Safety Complex project. So this simply, simply just establishes the project and moves the general fund dollars into the project, as well as serves as essentially a landing pad for the federal grant that we've been awarded as well. The resolution recognizes that we are still in the process of putting the cash together for the project, including reaching out to other funding partners to obtain the funding to fully fill out this project. This is just necessary so we can start to do work against it using the resources already identified. So the administration recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, I do have a question. The amount on there is 30 million. I know we put up 15 million.
Yes, yeah.
You want to talk about that?
Yeah, so the amount on there is 30 point, the total amount estimated for the project is $32 million. So there's actually some dollars currently already being spent in cash on this, roughly 800,000, so it brings you up to a total of 31.6. So this just appropriates the total value of what we think the project is going to be and puts in cash, and the resolution puts in cash associated with 10 million in general fund, as well as serves as a landing spot for the 4 million in federal grants that we've received. But the, it sets up the project in total so that we can, when we get the cash in, we can ultimately spend against that. So that's the total value of the project. That plus the amount that we're currently spending against the 800,000 of ARPA funding, that brings you to a total of 31.6.
Okay, you told us it's 32 million.
Yeah, well
Numbers is jumping around. Then you just helped me.
So 32 million, it's just north, the total is just north of 31.7 million, so 32 million, yes.
So in that account, is there 30 million dollars or just 15 million?
There's the appropriated amount in terms of cash. The resolution moves the 10 million into it and also prepares for the 4 million in federal funding. That's what, that is the cash that is in there. This is just appropriating the project, though.
So the capacity is 30 million?
Correct, the capacity is there for the project, but we still have to find the cash for the
I just want to know, were we putting in 30 million to get reimbursed? Are we just opening up accounts and say we hope to
We're essentially opening that account, and we're putting 10 million in there plus the 4 million of, or weighting the 4 million of the federal dollars as well.
We putting in 15 million, right?
Yeah, and there is money out there in ARPA as well that we're already spending against. And that, some of that money will go in for the, that brings it up to 31.6, 31.7 million.
Okay, I'll open up for questions, Vice President?
I have no questions.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, you know, we keep saying the project, the project, and it just makes me think about say the name, because we lose sight of what this project is. This is a direct closure of the gun range. And that this is what this project is, because we'll lose sight of this. The Regional Safety Complex, I know they changed the name and all this. This is directly to try to get rid of and close the gun range. We're not calling it Lincoln Heights, but I think we need to make sure that people know what we're talking about, and that's what this project is about.
I think that's important. The other thing in the presentation yesterday with the realist, someone brought up about, had we tried the Kresge Foundation? They said they were interested in projects like this. It was during the segment
We've worked with the Kresge Foundation before, we can check into that, certainly, yeah.
I thought I put that, they said that they're looking for these type of projects. I thought I passed that along, and I hate, I cannot remember her name. I will get her name because she deserves the credit. She brought it up with the Port Authority presentation, and she asked, had we reached out to the Kresge Foundation?
I'll check on that, because as I said, we have worked on them with some other projects, so it's a good idea, we'll check on that.
Okay, great. Okay, well, I make a motion to approve item number 10.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. I'm getting to the consent agenda.
I know, but I was just wondering, Madam Chair, if you could simplify the consent agenda, and you're going to have him go through
He's going, yeah, he's going to simplify. I'm going to have him simplify, I'm going to have him simplify. It's real fast.
Want me to walk through it very quickly?
Yes, very quickly.
All right, happy to do, happy to do that.
She's doing that to you, interpreters, everything here, she wants quick and fast. The interpreters told us to slow down.
You can just pass?
No, I want to know, I wanted some money on here.
I'm happy, I'm happy to walk through it very quickly. Happy to walk through it just very quickly, if that's the board's preference.
Walk on through.
Yeah, okay. So item number 11 is a, this is an agreement with Talbert House regarding the extension of the contract for the Community Alternative Sentencing Center, 1.46 million. There's a budget adjustment related to reimbursement of E. Poll books, E. Poll books from the state, as well as some engineer road projects, adjusting the budget at 1.3 million, most of that is all grant-related. There's a resolution awarding the ITB 034-23 for the County Engineer for Road Paint, 267,000. There's the second of three projects coming forward. We did the first one last time, concrete waterproofing down at the stadium for $645,000. There's a resolution for ITB 015-23 related to FabCor. That is awarding a bid for the Justice Center cell window screen installation project. We also have, under Human Resources, the approving of a tentative agreement with AFSMI in our Planning and Development Office. We have a resolution authorizing the amendment of the Table of Organization for a PC specialist, Computer Specialist 1 position in our 911 Center to help with third shift activities. We have a resolution authorizing a renewal number two for an agreement We have a resolution authorizing a renewal number two for an agreement with Changing Lives Youth Services for Group Home Services at $500,000. And we are also approving for the, receiving for the record Municipal Court's annual report for the year, calendar year 2022. And we have one item on for the report of no objection to five liquor permit applications from the sheriff, and one travel item at the county's expense to employees in the Treasurer's Office to Dayton, Ohio.
Thank you. I just have one, item number 12. Wanted to bring highlights to it, is the voter ID law?
Yeah.
That it's done at the state level, and certainly here is one of the most restrictive in the country. However, in here, it has voter ID notifications. Is that a mailer we're doing, or...
Yeah, this is, it's just to support the funding for mailing to go out to educate on the requirements.
Wanted to know if there is, I don't know what the state law, that's why we got to have our lawyers in here, but I want to look into, because a lot of people can't afford the ID. Are we allowed to do anything in that regard toward a state issue, a state ID?
Assisting with costs for...
Yes. Because I want to know, because I would like to possibly put something forward if it's allowable, that would allow for basic ID, I'm not talking about going out and getting a, but a basic ID, because there's a lot of people who don't have them, older people, those kind of things, some other people don't, can't afford it, if they don't have a vehicle, those kind of things. Or what is the state ID? I mean, is our county ID something that's, I don't think it is acceptable, so...
But we can, we can follow up on the state ID issues.
Look into that, can we, yeah. I'd like to know legally if we're able to do it, and if so, we'd like to have our colleagues take a look at it to helping provide those who don't have the money to help with that. So, yeah, just all I had to say about it. Anyone else have any items? Vice President Drehouse?
I want to just note item 15, which is $1,892 for the windows over at the Justice Center, and I'm glad to see this thing moving forward. It's a safety issue, and I'm glad that it's on the agenda.
Commissioners, any comments? Okay, I'd like to put a motion to adopt and accept for the records, item number 11, 20...
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. I'd like, anything else, Commissioners?
Just one thing, Madam Chair.
Yes.
You mentioned earlier about, you know, as we reviewed the lease for the stadium and the Bengals, and you were saying that our taxpayers pay about 94% of the taxes. I thought it was a little higher, and I wanted Jeff to clarify, I thought it was more like 96%, which is just a little bit difference, but when I tell the story, I want to be accurate, and I thought that the percentage was a little higher.
I, Commissioners, I could, since I don't have the number right here in front of me, and we're talking about the difference between a percent or two, let me follow up on that and just get you the exact precise number. I think what we're talking about for anyone who's watching at home is, I think, if I'm here, the 94, 96% number is the percentage of dollars paid by the public in the construct, initial construction of Paul Brown Stadium versus private funding. So I can get you the final, I can get you a hard number on that, just so you've got the hard, the nominal dollar amounts, as well as the percentages as well.
Thank you.
Without taking a stab at it right here.
Either way, it confirms what you were saying about the taxpayers are paying too much, so.
Too much.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I want to back up just for a second. I want to bring some clarity to the Cincy Smiles issue. I didn't, we held that for a week, and I didn't mean to give the impression that, you know, we can't hold items if we have questions, we do that all the time, and I'm supportive of that. I just didn't want to give the impression that if someone comes for funding out of one program and they're not participating in another program, that we're going to hold the item because they're not participating in something else. So that was, you had mentioned that Commissioner Dumas was supportive of holding the item and I was not, and so I just wanted to be clear as to why I was not supportive of doing that, because I, my understanding was that it was linked to another program, and I didn't want to, and again, I don't want anybody to get the impression if you're not participating in one program with the county, that you are not eligible for other funds through ARPA or anything else that we do.
Yeah, I don't think that's the issue. I will say, since I've been here, there are several times you've asked to hold items, and as well as Commissioner Dumas on some things, and just as a friendly thing, I just, I hold items. They got a question, and some things I didn't agree with that you held, but I just said you're a commissioner, you deserve to look into it a little bit longer, and I would like to have the same respect, and I want to be clear about one item and another item. I don't care if you do do an RFP. We've had people do RFPs all the time, and they bring stuff to us, and we say, "No, we want to put more money toward this person," or, "No, we don't want to do this." And we've knocked it down, or we put, with somebody getting $400,000 and never have to come face us in advance? No, I don't agree with that. So all I'm asking for is the same respect. It's not one program, it's really all one program. ARPA is one program. We, we've, all the time, we move stuff. We say, "Well, now we're going to use the ARPA. We was going to use this much for broadband, but we changed our mind, we're going to put a little bit more over here." So it's just got to be equal respect. I don't agree every time we hold something, but if a commissioner asks to hold something, it's only three of us, let's hold it. We've already given the organization over $200,000. And then when I talked to the organization, what got me was, no one had talked to them about how do we better leverage our dollars? We're giving away money and not even stretching it. How do we fund this over here? We got a, we got a whole program we've funded over here, and we're not leveraging, how do we work collectively to get more bang for the dollar? So that's what, and I know it's hard because we don't get to talk to each other, but if a commissioner, I'm just saying, as the president, how I'm running a meeting, if a commissioner has an issue, unless it's the commissioner's initiative and we trying to hold it out, I usually try to just, I've been asked, "They want to hold it, sure." I mean, I didn't want to hold it, but on some of those things you had, and I said, "Sure, let's hold it," and I can name them, and I held it. And, you know, I said, "Let's hold it, give it respect." So I just would like to have the same respect in holding it. So you have to get two votes, and I had to, I got the vote on this one, Commissioner Dumas gave a vote, and then you ran down there to the clerk to find out, "Did I really get the vote?" I mean, we can't have that down here. We got to have some respect. Some stuff I don't agree with. I didn't agree that Lincoln Heights was sitting here, and we were going to be in Lincoln Heights on a Tuesday, and then Ms. Childs, who was the councilwoman, she left, went to bed, and I went to bed, nobody called me, and then two votes said we not going to Lincoln Heights, and then it was told to Ms. Childs that we don't do Tuesday meetings, but we're getting ready to do a Tuesday meeting for the women and girls, and we're getting ready to vote on legislation at the meeting. So just, we want to have one set of rules. I like to give respect to each commissioner, even if I may not agree. If you want more information, go ahead and get it, and I want to be clear, just because you went through an RFP, we don't have to vote for it. We might want to make a change, otherwise they wouldn't ask us to vote on it. They just do the RFP, and it never comes to the commission.
And I didn't, I don't mean to be disrespectful to you, to Commissioner Dumas or anybody else. When items are held, we do that all the time, it's common practice, and so I am happy to do that. This one was linked, though, to the 513 relief bus, and if an organization doesn't have the capacity, or the interest, or whatever the reason is, I don't know what the reason would be, to not participate in that particular program, I don't, I am uncomfortable withholding funding from a different program for that organization, given that dynamic. So that, that was my only problem with it. It's been resolved, and I'm glad that we voted on it.
All the programs are affiliated with Hamilton County. All programs are affiliated with Hamilton County, and I just don't really like how you're trying to look like something funny went on. I asked more than one question about this particular prize, why this program is in Dale High, and how people who don't live in Dale High can get there. I don't want to tear the organization down because they're doing good, but nobody even talked to them about what we're trying to do countywide. So I have a right to ask questions, just like you have a right to ask questions, but it just seems as though, and I didn't want to go here, you wanted to go here, I have a record from you that when I do something, you're always voting against it behind the scenes. And then when you do something, you held up a whole thing over in St. Bernard, and St. Bernard needed help, and you held it up because you wanted to get a little language that didn't really mean anything, really, but we held it up for two weeks, because I said, "Well, if she wants to hold it up, we hold it up." We also held up something over in the juvenile court, a program that was over there, we held up. So I don't mind holding it up, and I never question your motives. I don't have any motives. My motives is, this is one Hamilton County, we need to get a better bang for the buck. The days of just throwing money and letting organizations run off and do whatever they want to do is over. We're trying to look at an umbrella of stretching out our dollars. Now, the RFP, whatever it was, I'm mad it wasn't in the RFP. I don't make the RFPs, neither do you, neither does Commissioner Dumas, but I'm telling the administrator, why would we invest in a bus with a dental chair to help people that need dental help, and then we get a RFP come in and we don't even, the light bulb never come on, and say, "Well, hey, guys, how do we leverage this and stretch it?" And actually, when I talked to them, they were excited, but nobody had ever talked to them. So that's what really happened, but I wouldn't have had a chance to, I wouldn't have had a chance to talk to them if I just would have been a rubber, I've been a rubber stamp for $200,000, but we're talking $400,000, and as a commissioner, I have a right to ask the questions.
Absolutely, and that, and that question should have been asked when the bus got here, I guess, we all should have thought of, you know, who are the partners here, but regardless...
Well, it was asked, and it was supposed to be implemented. I'm not the implement, I can't be the commissioner and the administrator. It's supposed to be implemented. When you put your stuff forward, they implement. I put my stuff forward, it's always a fight.
That's not a fair characterization. I mean, it's just not fair.
Commissioners, if I could...
You brought it up, so I'm going to finish it up. Commissioner Dumas first, and then Ms. Ludo, you can have something to say. It's Commissioner Dumas has to fill. What are you doing with my say? Get him.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If a commissioner has a reason to hold an item, I have no problem with it. Delay is not denial. We waited one week for all the money that we were giving them, and I don't think any entity or any agency would have a problem with a delay to get 200,000 or 400,000.